All right, it's six o'clock. It's called meeting to order. I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the very public who works with us, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Second item on the agenda is recognition.
All right, thank you. I don't need full recognition this evening, but I would like to just give a shout out to our faculty staff. As you know, we've had a fairly dry December and early January, but that all changed in the last week and a half, and they just work the amendment for a great job. The sidewalks, parking lot, the DPW as well, I think that storm we had, a weekend storm, without their efforts, we would have been looking at a day off from school. We had two RFI, so thank you to all of those gentlemen for their hard work. I also want to welcome Caitlin Gravich, who is our new admin assistant in special education, but also should be our recording secretary for these meetings.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Nate.
Yeah, I'm good.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes? There are several minutes there. Question to approve? Second.
Second.
Any questions? All over favor? All right. Vote? Oh, it should be noted that, it's vote, I'm sorry. Should be noted that Dan will not be joining us tonight. He had a work conflict, so. Public participation on agenda items. Next is communications.
We did receive the WIU first reading.
Yeah, so back in November, back in September, Mr. Burden sent an email, I mean, sent a letter to the school committee asking for us to open negotiations with Northbrook Building Educational Support Professionals. And here is my Myakoba. In November, I actually mentioned that at the school committee meeting, that we needed to get back to them with information about when we wanted to get together and have a conversation. I did not do anything with that in December, although in my response to Mr. Burden, I did say, "I wasn't aware that you were awaiting a response." So that's my mistake. I actually acknowledged that they were waiting a response in November and did not do anything with it in December. So I apologize for being incorrect in my response. I did say that we would talk about it at today's meeting. I don't know that, I originally thought we would have to go into executive session for that conversation, but I think we need to set up some meetings at first with the negotiation team, and then based on that, we can do an executive session, because we literally just got a copy of the agreement today, and so without looking at that agreement, I don't know if the committee would have any insight as to what they would want to do going forward. So I will talk with the rest of the negotiation team today, come up with some dates in February that we can extend to them and see if that works. Is there any other communication?
That's all I have.
So again, my apologies for misrepresenting what I thought was the facts at the time when I sent the email. Obviously, I went back and looked at the minutes and I wasn't correct, so. Student representative report.
Thank you. I don't have much today. It's a very small report. January is our slowest month. We're currently working on our excellence book submissions, as well as our other award submissions. As of right now, we're planning on submitting a nomination for our top 10 project award, as well as submitting for the National Council Excellence Award. These awards are due by the end of the month. We have our Unity Week coming up. It will be held from February 12th to the 16th, and this event is used to enhance our sense of community as a school, and to show support for all the different types of people, from members of the LGBTQ community, to people with special needs, and even just everyone's own individuality. We have a couple conferences and field trips coming up. Our MASE Spring Conference at Hyannis is March 5th to the 8th, and then we have our Spring Conference in April. And then, as always, we have our social medias, I have Instuko for Instagram and Facebook, and the reminder that our student council meetings are always open to the communities.
That was actually your shortest report. It's a new record. Very good for you. Thank you. Any questions? Okay, moving on. We have the school committee reports. Regionalization is the only one that's listed. I have no update. We have not had a meeting since June. I've reached out to our state rep. He said he's been making phone calls, and I've not heard anything since then. Financial reports.
If I may ask, I just, I read to Mr. Duff last Friday, the SWAC meeting, and we discussed it briefly. We were trying to text Mr. Swanker, and then Mr. Swanker emailed, obviously, and it didn't happen. So I did ask Mr. Duff if there was like updates, and we did not know any updates.
We're in a holding pattern, apparently. Can't move forwards that way. Makes it difficult, because we can't move forward, so, as a district, so. Financial reports.
I have attached the financial reports for your review. We're going to be warrants that were signed over the last few weeks.
So I think at the last meeting, I asked for the donations to be brought to us, so we could approve them. I'll see them again this month, so.
Which donations are you referring to?
I think I'm correct rate, so there were donations for the field trip.
I acknowledged it was in the last meeting.
Was it in the last meeting? I'm sorry, I didn't, I don't remember seeing them, so, okay, thank you.
I can, I mean, I can put those in the next meeting again.
No, if they were there, I just don't remember seeing them. I apologize. I didn't look at last month's, like, in depth, so I looked at a couple months earlier, so I apologize. So, okay. And then the transfers? Because I see that there's a lot of accounts, lines in the negative, or all those lines in negative accounts that go with transfers. Is that?
So the ones that, accounts that say will be offset by grants and stuff, that's going to be so, like, to be a cover for tuition. We did the encumbers for the whole year, because obviously more of the bill than there is money to the budget, so that would be offset by certain regular school choice. There were tenders yet, but there will be some in the next few months, kind of robbing up for the grant stuff, so.
But I was more concerned about the ones that didn't have those. So like, there's a membership thing, like, line two or three, that I couldn't go find it, if that's important, but there's, there's line items that are in the negative right now, and I don't remember seeing transfers for those. And if they are transferred, if we did approve a transfer, it might be nice to put those, and I'm not trying to make more work for you, I know you do a lot, but maybe it might be nice to put aside of it, so that we could see them, but I'm looking at in particular, sorry, just went past it. So, membership district is the very first line item. There was nothing budgeted. We spent $4,738. There's a budget balance of negative 407, 400, $4,738, but there's no transfer for that, that I've seen. And maybe I've seen it in the last several months, but there's no comment to say when the transfer was approved and where it came from.
Yeah, so I'll go through all those and I'll take them and how they're going to be, what the trends are going to go through.
Well, if we haven't tripped, so if the money's been spent and the transfer hasn't been processed, that transfer needs to get processed when that money is spent. We can't wait till the end of the year and go, "Oh, let's do all these 70,000 transfers." We need to know where that money's coming from, because it's coming from some other line item, that the budget had been approved for to that line item. Do you understand what I'm saying? So if we spent $4,738, and I don't know when we spent it, I've seen this here for a while. Any idea when we spent that? Was it beginning of the year?
That was for superintendent, the dues and memberships, so that just might, honestly, I had to look at that, that might have just been put into the wrong account number, so reality, I need to reallocate that, but that would be a transfer to an account, an coverage account number.
Yeah, I guess I'm just asking if you have any idea when that might have been, when it might have hit the account that way? So was it back in September, October, November?
Would have been, I believe, over a year.
Right. So what I'm saying is, if we did that in September or October, we should see a transfer that allocates that money from some other account, not here in January or February, but we should see that back when we made that transfer, because we're trying to manage the budget, right? So all, and I'm not, I'm not complaining, I'm not, this is not a, I'm just trying to make sure that we're all on the same page. We're moving money from, if we're spending money outside of what we budgeted, we need to move that money from somewhere, and I just need that to come to this committee, so we, that's all.
When we do a, when we do a transfer, we always attach those to these minutes.
Right, right. So I'm just saying, and I haven't seen some transfers, but some of these, I mean, there's a lot in, in my opinion, sorry, shouldn't use that word, but in my opinion, there's significant number of negative accounts here, and I just don't, other than the ones that say will have offset from grants, that I don't see where that money came from, right? So, I mean, we have $1.50, that's the total, sorry. Don't do that, don't want to scare anybody, but, but there's some transfers that need to happen, and I'm not seeing, so let, we can just keep that in more variety of cases. I'm not saying it has to be, you made the change on September, we need to see in October, but made the change September, let's see it in October, November, right? Let's make sure that we're, so that we know what our budget is, that's my own, so. Does anybody else have anything on finances? Sorry, I'm the numbers guy. It's my issue, it's not, it's not your issue, it's mine. Okay. I think it's fair to have an explanation for the, for the negativity. Yeah, for the negative balances, so. Anything else?
So unfortunately, I didn't think about this part when I looked at the agenda, but I wanted to go over some of the preschool discussion we had last month, and I didn't have it put on the agenda, so where we, how would we talk about that old business?
How you do that under the, oh, you could have done that in the school committee report.
Okay.
So if you want to go back to that weekend, you can ask your questions there. Or you could do it under the administrative reports, because we're going to get an administrative report from me, even though she's not here. We'll get a report from there, so you can ask those questions.
Okay.
So let's just continue on that, and good report from the superintendent.
Okay. So I'll start with my report, and then the bulk of my report this evening is the FY25 budget presentation, which everybody, really, I gave you a copy of the executive summary and the presentation this evening as well. Should have received on a Friday. Hopefully sometime over this weekend, you get a chance to look at it. But I want to just update the committee and the public on some of our staffing updates. As I mentioned already, we welcomed Caitlin Gravich as a new special education admin assistant, and she's also our note taker here for these meetings. Tomorrow, our new district-wide L teacher, Caitlin Chappell, will start. Came in today to get situated with her classrooms. Did a tour with this preschool, Ms. Diorio, she will start officially tomorrow. And then we also brought on a new secondship custodian, Sub-Custodian, Mr. Elijah Babcock here from high school, so we welcomed him a little over a week ago. And then we also welcomed a new pre-k teacher, Natasha Thompson, who is starting with the last week and a half this preschool, at the elementary school. So those are the new additions to our district and school-wide staffs.
If I could just ask you to explain what the L teacher is, because the folks at home may not know.
English language lawyer. Just English language lawyer.
There you go, thank you.
Used to be ESL, now it's referred to as L. So we have a group of students in the district who, English is not their first language, and so we need to make sure we support those students in both buildings, and this one position will facilitate instruction, support those students in both buildings.
Is this a new position?
No.
Oh, just refit, okay. So one of the things that we did request was that we find out about who is left also, not just new hires, but people that have left or are leaving. That was mentioned in email correspondence, wasn't it?
What was the question exactly?
We want to know who leaves too, not just who's coming on.
So in the email that was sent to you, the request was, can we get a list on a monthly basis of those folks who are leaving the organization or left the organization, and those folks who are coming on? So if we've had anybody leave?
So for instance, Megan Morgan left.
Right.
And then we had to hire a new preschool teacher, obviously anyone left, you know, like, I think that that should be provided to the school committee each month also.
And selfishly, if we didn't know Megan was leaving, we'd have said something at the last meeting, right? We didn't know, so.
You could say it at the last meeting.
Yeah. At least you'd say to us that it was your last name.
No, well, I didn't hear it, because I was shocked when I found out.
I don't recall. I'm not sure if she went to announce it. I don't recall, she either did not.
Well, partly, it'd been nice to be able to say the word "thank you" for your service and, so, and if she didn't want to announce it, I get that, I understand that, right?
But that could have been included in the report, that as a result of Megan Morgan leaving, we hired a new administrative assistant.
Anyway, going forward, if we could just get that information going forward, so that we make sure that we have that, because it's important.
Not only just from the school committee, but transparency for the, you know, the parents in the district, for who's in and out the door and.
Well, the only I would say to that is, we have to be careful with personnel issues. We can't discuss why somebody left.
Right. Not asking for that.
Be very clear about that.
Right, we're just asking for who left and who's staying, or who's coming in, or whatever, so. Well, we don't want who's staying, we don't, that would be ridiculous, right? But who's left and who's, or who's leaving and who's coming in, right? We also want our, our parents and students to know that there's a continuation plan, so that they're still getting support that they need throughout the organization, so.
So all Philly principals do update parents and families about new additions when they happen, so.
So, but this committee is the committee that represents the town, and this committee does a lot, right?
I just told those, I just gave you those four names, so.
I'm saying about the people who are leaving. So for the purposes of this meeting, and to avoid, you know, personnel issues being brought into this, would it suffice to have Mr. McCormick announce, you know, vacancies or something like that, rather than naming names, say, like, a high school, you know, algebra teacher, and this teacher, or something like that, rather than naming the names?
Name the names when they're hired.
Yes.
I don't think it's a privacy issue.
There's no privacy issue with saying that Joe Smith has decided to leave the organization, or Joe Smith last day is, you know, the 3rd of March, right? I don't think there's any issue with that. The issue is, you can't say why Joe Smith's last day is March 3rd, and I'm perfectly okay with that, but I think that it's, you're.
Transparency.
They're all listed in, in the town report with the amount of money they make, how much, like, we're just saying, if they're not going to be here, can we know that?
I think also, to find out by going on school spring, that we have an administrative assistant opening, is not the way for people to find out, or school committee to find out, that all of a sudden someone has left. We had an issue last month talking about the preschool, in terms of having three classes and only two teachers, and how that worked out, and how that is or isn't okay, and then right after that meeting, there was someone who left as a preschool teacher. I think transparency is important.
I think it's also important that a request was made by the committee, or a request was made by a member of the committee, and copied to me, and I asked that it be included, and it's not here. And so the email request was crystal clear about what they were asking for, and I'm very concerned about the fact that it's not here. So if we can go forward, because I don't want to dwell on the past, going forward, we would like to, I would like to know, as the committee chair, and I'm hearing from the rest of the members, some of the rest of the members of the committee, and we're going to vote if we have to, that we would like to hear about whether they're leaving the organization at the time that they're leaving the organization. So, not why, just that they are, or that they have, you know, something, you know, we leave this meeting tomorrow, today, and tomorrow, Susie Smith comes in and says, "I'm done, I'm out of here." You obviously couldn't have allowed us to know that. An email would be fine, or a text message saying, "Hey, by the way, Susie Smith has left," so that we're not caught at Hannaford's with somebody going, "Why is Susie Smith leaving?" Well, I didn't know Susie Smith left, so, you know, just, it's a, it's a matter of making sure that we're informed, so that when we are talking to our constituents, we have the appropriate response, not like, "Oh my God, I had no idea," right? So if we could do that going forward, that'd be great.
I think it's just out of fairness to parents in the district, though there's, you know, if there are vacancies, that there's, you know, knowing that there's something in the works for that vacancy to be filled, and I think it helps to know how long those gaps are as well, because I think that's important to know. Like, it might not necessarily be, it could be a matter of who's actually available to fill that role, and, you know, finding the right people. And I think that's, that's another important metric, you know, knowing how, whether or not it's difficult to find someone for that role or not, I think that plays into this as well.
Okay. Any questions? No? Okay. Feel free, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Just to finish up, some of my updates here before I go into the budget presentation. I've been working closely with Ms. Diorio, and something that we have been talking about over the course of even last year to this year, about building an innovative pathway for the high school. What we've done to support this endeavor, we phased it, we brought in Project Lead the Way, grade 6 through 8. We should, again, we should hear very, very soon about our Project Lead the Way launch brand, which is for grades 8 through 5. But what we're trying to do is, we recognize that we have a student population who's leaving the high school, and looking at both juniors and seniors, who don't have a real plan, if they want to go college, they may graduate, go to the workforce, but don't have a clear plan with that either. So we have done some research, and one of the areas, one of the job, the jobs that has a big draw in this area is advanced manufacturing. As you know, right in the background, we have Virem, we have Flexon on that road, so we're trying to partner, and we will be partnering with Virem in the near future, in giving some of our outgoing seniors a work-based learning experience, so that they can learn the soft skills they need to be successful in the workforce, and then actually put some hours of work at Virem. We had a great meeting with Virem last week, with their HR director, and we are just working on the details now. Ms. Diorio may touch on this later in the presentation, but he's meeting with some students in the next couple days to discuss this, this opportunity for them. We feel that this is the next step, that we want to offer our students a viable workplace opportunity when they leave from local high school. And this moves students away from looking at your typical W donuts, and the food chains that a lot of students kind of fall into. This is more of a specialized career path, with a much higher ceiling for earning value over the course of their career. So there's a lot we're moving parts of this, and as we get these all together, Ms. Diorio will present the committee, and to the public, what is going on. We're very excited about starting with a small form of students this year, and allowing them the opportunity to work at Virem, and get some real viable work experience during fourth or fifth year. So I just want to give you guys an update on this. I think this is an exciting opportunity for our school. This will lead to an innovative pathway designation for the district, and advanced manufacturing, which will lead to more opportunities for our kids. And like I said, this will be going from kindergarten, believe it or not, all the way to grade 12, to incorporate two-step capital class, reading, snowboarding, science, the science programs. So more to come, but I want to give you guys an update on that work this evening.
Are there any credits for this program, or is it just like an extracurricular?
Probably not yet, no, but what we're doing is, we're going to build in some conventionally, like your ocean tent, so that students will have that extra layer when they, when they graduate.
How are the children chosen for that?
We're going to get into that at a later date, but the, the initial presentation will be to the entire student class, to spark an open, and those students who really kind of gravitate towards this, we want, we want that option.
Okay. Please.
All right. So again, I believe you had a chance to look over the, the budget, the draft budget for So I wanted to start, and this is something that, it's fairly timely, because we just, this was just approved, I think a month or two ago. We went through our strategic planning, and we just want to kind of guide us with our planning, not only for our budget, but the next three or four years of the school district. And I put it in our newly adopted mission statement. Our mission is to empower every student to reach their full potential by providing a dynamic and inclusive learning environment that fosters creativity, critical thinking, and a sense of belonging. We are committed to continuous improvement, innovation, and the salvation of diversity, ensuring the delivery of high-quality educations of all. We prepare our students for success in a global society by instilling qualities and skills to be contributing and effective citizens. I think that frames what we're talking about this evening. And some of our goals for this evening, and I try to keep these fairly straightforward and simple. One, to present the FY25 recommended budget. And then, two, I know this is a lengthy process, this process usually is final in, in June, hopefully a town meeting is when this budget will be adopted, but between now and June, there's a lot of conversation and looking at the budget and the town budget, and where the school budget fits into all of that. So the next step would be, receive feedback and guidance from the committee on where we want to go with this. And as you saw in the executive summary, really want to be transparent with this, I want, this is a comprehensive overview, the executive summary is more detailed, this presentation is more of an overview, but I also want to give everybody in the committee, plus the general public, access to what we're talking about. So this presentation, in very short time, we have it on our website, people can look So some of the guiding principles of our budget development process. And I want to start off by, the school district, the school department budget needs to be accurate, transparent, easy to understand, but based on the needs of our students. Right? Our students always strive what we do with our finances. How would we best support our students? We wanted, we did involve the entire admin administrative team in this process. So when I talk about the team, I mean Ms. Diorio, Ms. Priestley, Ms. Now, but then just start with that. They also had meetings with their teachers, who looked at, what do we need, what do we have, and what are we going to be, not only next year, but years down the road. And then we also want to, our preservation of resources is obviously our top priority, but growth and improvement needs to be maintained. And you're going to see in this FY25 budget, we don't have a lot of extra asks. I understand that the financial climate of the town right now is volatile, and we're looking at making sure that we hang on to everything we have. I think that's very important. So this is the, the next page is the FY25 recommended budget overall sum. So you're looking at a couple numbers here. You see the final approved FY24 budget, FY24 with offsets, which last year totaled a little over $1.3 million. The FY25 recommended budget is a little over $7.8 million, and the FY25 budget with offsets is $9.8 million, which is 1.993 in offsets. This is an increase from FY24 to FY25 of $636,000, $622.29, which is an increase of 8.85%. If you recall, last year, this presentation, we went from FY23 to FY24, it was an initial 17% increase. So we're looking at a much smaller increase, although it's obviously more than what we want to be. When you look at these increases, I'll explain them a little more in detail in the next couple slides, they're really predicated on three specific levers that really drive this increase.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Is this $7,000, $91,000, 963, the approved number at the town meeting, or is that the number after we return money back to the town that they asked for?
That's the number that was approved at town meeting.
And so do we have what the percentage increase would be, factoring in the money that was returned to the town?
What are you referring to?
At the beginning of the year, they asked us to return, what was it, $130,000, if I recall right?
No, it was, it was less than that, but that money came back to us from circuit breaker.
I'm just asking you the question, so whatever the number was, that actually becomes our approved budget, because we had to turn it back, right?
Well, what it's saying is that we got this approved, but then when the additional circuit breaker money came in to maintain that, we were able to give the town back that money, so it's still.
No, we still got it, and then we waited for that money back, but regardless of that.
Yes, but this is, this is still the operating budget of the school for this year, we just got additional circuit breaker money that kept it at that level while we were able to give whatever it was back to the town, if you get the exact number. So the town was only approved this number?
So the town approved that number, but then they asked us for money back, we gave them the money back, we happened to be able to get that money recruited through circuit breaker. We don't know if that's going to happen again this year, we know that it happened last year. So the money that we gave back to the town, whatever the number was, let's say it was
$100,000.
That money we gave this year because that student will be claiming a circuit breaker gift.
Whatever that number was, whatever that was, whatever was, $100,000, $70,000, whatever, they asked us to return that money, we did. So then that becomes actually the money that the town gave us, regardless of whatever else happened. And then we did get circuit breaker money that gave us that money back, which is great.
So that's the budget of the school?
Okay. If the town asked us to return money to them, the money that this town paid us, the circuit breaker isn't factored in anywhere else, it only comes in because the town asked us for money.
The circuit breaker's factored in the ask for this year.
The estimated circuit breaker is factored in.
Yes.
Right, we got extra circuit breaker last year, right? But we didn't know that was coming. It happened to come. I'm just asking the question. So the answer to the question is now, we don't know what that percentage is based off of what the town asked us to give back. We did factor that, that's fine. I'm just asking the question.
Are you talking about the student that?
I'm not talking about any student.
He's talking about money directly from the town.
At the town meeting.
Percentage based on the budget. So if this is a budget increase, you're talking town contribution increase percentage?
Nope, I'm talking about what, I'm talking about what happened at the town meeting. Town meeting, went to town meeting, town meeting voted $7,191,000 in dollars after that, whatever that is, right? Am I correct?
It's the number right there at the top of it.
Right, so the numbers after that. At some point, very shortly after that, the town came to us and said, we need $100,000 or whatever it was, so that we could balance the town budget, what can you do for us? And at the end of that, we were able to give them that, back that money. And at the same time, we found out that there was going to be circuit breaker money coming back to us that would offset the money that we gave back to them. What did I say that's not correct in that statement?
I didn't say you did.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just, I'm asking because I'm being looked at like I don't know what, like, so the number that the town gave us as a budget was approved by this, it was $7.1 million, almost $7.2 million. And then they asked for some of it back, we gave it back to them. So the money that was given to us by the town is not $7.191 million, although it was, we gave back to them some number, whatever that was, $100,000, $100,000, whatever that number is, I don't remember it off the top of my head, I'm sorry. All I'm asking is, based off of what that new number was, that new number that the town was giving us, did we calculate what the increase was? And the answer, I'm guessing, is no. Because the answer is that you believe that that didn't change the town budget, that was our budget, because we got the money from circuit.
It didn't change the school's budget, maybe it changed how much the town gave us, but it didn't change the school budget.
Right, so I understand that, but we didn't know we were going to get that. We turned that money back. But we did get it, the school still cost us. I understand, I understand we did get it, I get that, I'm not suggesting that.
So do you want this to be 9.63%?
No, all I'm asking is, do we know what that percentage would be based on what we actually got from the town? I'm not asking, I'm not asking you to do that, I'm asking you, did we do that? The answer is no, we did not do that. Okay, that's all I asked, that's it. I'm good. That's all I asked.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the next slide. So as I mentioned, there are three major budget drivers, and these drivers are the same ones that drove FY24. And looking at these kind of in order, we have salaries, which as you can see is 64% of our total budget, and that's, that incorporates 20% of the total increase. So looking at salaries, that's all our teaching salaries, our support staff, which as Mr. Ryle mentioned already, we will be negotiating with that, that part of the unit this year, so we have a placeholder for that group, our students, our admin. But that is a 4.7% increase, so it's a $220,000 increase in FY24 and FY25. Our spread tuition is a 6% increase, $97,000 increase from FY24 to FY25. I want to note that over the course of FY24, we started the year off with eight students that were at additional placements. Over the course of this year so far, we had three additional students absorbed for this budget, so that number, at one point, projected number is 1.1, it rose to 1.629. So we're looking at just about a $100,000 increase for FY24 and FY25. And then last, on this list of major budget drivers, is our transportation. As you may recall, we did sign a five-year contract with AA Transportation, spread over sort of five years, 30% increase, so that's roughly 6% per year. So this includes the part of AA Transportation. Additionally, what we have to factor to this is our additional placement transportation. So that's why this number went to $220,000, which is a 20.7% increase for FY24 and FY25.
So if I could just explain one thing as far as I remember it, right, so the salaries, I don't want anybody to think, oh my God, I'm getting a 4.7% increase, that's not the way this works, right? There's movement across the scale and, and I know we do this down, but it's actually operate, so for the people who've been here for a period of time, there's a step up that they go, anybody who increases their education, they move this way across the scale. So that's, there's a difference there for those folks who've been with us for a period of time, who've also increased their value by getting better education or more education, I shouldn't say better, more education. So there's, that's all incorporated in that number, it's not, we're looking at giving anybody almost 5% increase, right? So I want to make sure that everybody understands that there's movement across and longevity that also plays into that number.
So another way of looking at, so budget increase in context, hardly 5% collectively, but three factors that impact the FY25 we just went over, salaries, transportation costs, and special tuition. And again, just to reiterate, that last year we were looking at initially a 17% increase, we were half that to start FY25, our conversation around the operating budget. So another way of looking at the budget in context, so together, the increase of special ed tuition, transportation, salaries for the FY25 budget, total $522,000, which accounts for each percent of the total budget increase of 8.85. So if you took away those three major drivers that we just articulated, in the absence of these three, the budget increase would be 1.6%. I just want, just want to be clear about that. If you look at all the other parts of our budget, the increase for FY24 and FY25 would be 1.6%. So the question that I know that we think about, we talk about, we answer questions around this, why does special education tuition, why does it continue to go up in such large amounts? FY24 was an anomaly. For several years, the OSD, the increase is around 2% to 3% per year, correct, for the cost of additional placements. Last year, that jumped to 14%, so we saw a huge spike with those costs. This year, we're told it's going to be about a 6% increase, so that's what we need to plan for. So that is better than 14%, but still above the average we've seen for the last several years. So that is a big reason for the $97,000 increase. Additionally, like I mentioned already, we had three additional students that were included as overdue placements this year.
So the understanding would be that because they're allowed 6%, they're going to take their 6% just like they took the 14%, right? They have the ability, they're going to, if they didn't, then we, it wouldn't be, then we could, it wouldn't be such a hit, right?
Pretty much, pretty much. I will say that our collaborative, Southern Washington County Collaborative that we work with, there's seventeen member districts, does work with us and does not try to always max out on the increase percentage. So I think, you know, that is one plus in working with, with our collaborative, they do a nice job of us financially. But that is, there's a lot of truth to that statement. I also want to add that there's no contingency to this plan too. So what I mean by that is that we're not padding this with additional spots, right? I wish we could, I wish we could build in some extra money to support, you know, if we did have additional students that needed these supports, these additional placements that we need to provide, but we simply cannot do that. So there's very little, there's no contingency in this budget request. But this next slide, the next piece that you have in front of you, just shows you kind of a breakdown of the number of students, your collaborative private day residential. We also absorbed the two 1-1, our professionals into this part of the line item budget for this, for FY25. And again, it just shows you the total tuition difference from FY24 to FY25, plus the cube increase, which is 6%. So the next couple of slides, and then you have this in here for your packet, are total revenue by source or offsets. And we did see an increase this year in our offsets, we went from roughly $1.3 to $1.9 million. I will start off by telling you, we have some slides dedicated just to this, but SRR3, if you remember, SRR1, SRR2, SRR3 started during the COVID-19 pandemic. We are at the tail end of our SRR funding. Our SRR funding will stop, has to be fully spent by September of '24. So the remaining $265,000 we had in SRR3 that we're using to offset salaries, this is the last, the last year for that, so that is done. So when you look at these two slides, you look at the executive summary, those numbers are red, meaning that's a difference, a negative difference, the numbers in green are an increase. So as you go through these, you can see that just kind of pinpoints the difference between the two. Just want to highlight a few of the major ones, some of the ones that are different this year than last year. Our spread circuit breaker. So initially, based on number, we projected $350,000 back to circuit breaker, we actually got $615,000 back from this date. We're now projecting at least $800,000 plus the carryover from this year. We are able to use, like I said, our SRR3 funds to support some of our salaries, and we also had some cost savings throughout the year from unfilled positions that we were able to use to offset some of our additional placements, therefore allowing us to have a carryover for some of our circuit breaker money. We have our spread IDA grant that we receive every year. This typically does not really change too much for our districts, although we have a carryover of $74,000. This will go to spread salary costs and supplies. We have a difference this year in student gift, we used our student gift account last year to offset some math curriculum for the district. We did use that for that math curriculum that we're using currently in gold buildings. Our school choice, right now, the school year's not over, so this number will most likely change and are positive for us, but it's a $65,000 difference right now in school choice. That again, will be used to offset salaries. And at the bottom of this, we have the two, the small rural school aid or the rural school aid that we have used to offset technology and so our PPS costs, both FY24 and FY25. We had no increase in our SRSAs, and we had a slight increase for our rural school, $585. Flipping over to the next page about offsets.
Yeah, just, if you can, just jump in real quick, like, this is something we've talked about previously at these meetings, about the importance and how local representatives and everyone, I think we signed, we signed petitions for that and things like that. You know, all this talk about rural school aid, we got extra $585.
Thank you for saying that.
That's, that's, that's what, one, I mean, well, went to college at some point, that's one good textbook at this point. Luckily, we're using computers, but still, $585 doesn't do a thing. It might as well just stay the same, it's almost insulting, it's a little angry, maybe, yeah.
Again, thank you for saying it, except we say the same thing, and I didn't want to interrupt you, I wanted to add.
Well, that's right, and it's something I.
But I will take turns interrupting.
I review a thousand percent. This is absolutely absurd, the members of the House and representatives and the State House, you all need to listen, we cannot continue to do this, you need to step it up. It's not fair.
It's not only we're the only ones.
Right, it's not fair.
Almost everyone west of 495 except for Worcester and Springfield.
We are doing everything we can to meet the educational needs of our children, and you need to help us, because this cannot continue. It's not fair to our children. It doesn't matter about me, right? But there's only so much I can give as well, and there's only so much the rest of the town can give. We don't have a manufacturing base, we have a few manufacturers in this town, we're not sitting on Route 9, we don't have the opportunity to get a mass bike exit here, we're not going to grow this town that way. So since we can't do that, you need to help us. That's, that's what you have to do.
I was giving you a hard time about percentages earlier, we're talking about a 6% special ed increase, and then they increase a $61,000 grant by $500. The percentages don't line up there.
They don't, not even close. So I implore you, figure it out so that you can help us, because we can't continue to do it. Not only can we not continue to do it, as Mr. Canada said, it's not just us, it's all of us, and we're failing our children because, because we can't get the funding that we need to do it properly. We're doing the best we can, we're giving children the education that, that we can give them, which meets the standards, but it's not fair to them. They should have all of the things that every other district has, and we can't do that on what we generate from this town. So I don't know, if you need me to come up there and get on my knees and beg, but please do something, because this is ridiculous. Sorry, thank you. Your floor.
Mr. Ryle or Mr. Boston?
I will do it, I know exactly where the State House is, I got friends over there.
We got a big gold dome that gets scraped somewhere off. Ron's got friends in high places.
I didn't say that, I have friends in Boston, that's what I said, sorry.
How much trouble is on that dome?
Just a few more that I just want to highlight, we're using a few accounts that we did not utilize last year. One is loss courses, the capital we've had, we've kept, but we're going to use that to offset some curriculum needs that we have for FY25. Additionally, the A&amp;P program, which as you know, we moved into, now use Champion as our vendor, we get some money in that account, we're going to use to offset pre-K salaries. And then spread stabilization, which is a, which is an account that we keep with the town that is just over 20, just shy of $21,000, that we use for some of our additional placements again for next year. So again, at the bottom of this page, you see the difference, there's a $237,000 increase over our offsets for FY25.
Is that, at the top of both sheets is the SRR3.
Yeah, that's not figured into the total, okay, I put that on there more for effect than anything else, because that's a big one that we're losing. Again, I just want to highlight a couple of major changes, just so everybody's clear. The first one is circuit breaker, we are seeing, projecting a $184,000 increase circuit breaker offset, so the projected $8,000 for FY25. Again, largely attributed to the immigration of three additional students this year, but this will help us mitigate the 673 set by OSD for those additional placements. And the hope is, and as Mr. Ryle was talking about, our local and statewide politicians, the hope is that at some point, circuit breaker will be more funded. Right now, FY25, we're looking at 56% reimbursement, the hope and the goal is for that to kick up to 75%. Ultimately, we'd love to have 100%, but 75% would be a huge increase for towns in Brookfield where one, two students that go out of district greatly impact our budget. So if that, whoever gets bumped up from the 55% that it is now, to 75%, that will greatly help out districts like us.
Circuit breaker question, is the, the circuit breaker, is that just for the additional district placements, or does that, can that be, go towards transportation too?
It can go for transportation, additional placements as well. Then the other slide, I just wanted to, again, do a little bit more grainy over this, was the end of SRR funds. So the remaining $267, which we have been using to offset salaries, that has to be spent by September of '24. I just gave you the breakdown of what we received over the last three rounds of SRR funding. So in total, you're $830,000 yourself in SRR funding. That is all coming beyond, that has to be spent, again, by September of '24. We will not be receiving any more SRR funds, so that, that offset will not be coming back to school districts across the Commonwealth. And that is, you know, it's a term that's used too frequently, I'm kind of sick of it frankly, but if this were flipped, we have to be aware of that, I think that we've mitigated that in some ways this year by being smart with our circuit breaker money, and also the positions that we did up fill and use that money to offset some of our costs. But after FY25, we will no longer receive any SRR funds, so that money is not coming back. Budget reallocations and budget additions. At this time. At this time, we don't have any formal budget, budget reallocations or budget additions. Again, this process is lengthy. This process is starting now, and will go through, probably through the middle or end of June, when this budget hopefully is finalized. So there may be some changes to, to allocation of funds throughout this process, but right now, we're not asking for anything outside of what we already see. And the one thing I just wanted to add again, I think this is a, a couple of slides here that I wanted to show the committee and the general public. For people, expenditures is a, is a, is a way to look or gauge how, you know, we are funding our, our four to plus students here in North Brookfield. And I have two graphics for people to look at. And the first one on the left is North Brookfield as it compares to local districts. And on the right, it's our, our dark districts. So these are the districts that are destined by destiny to have, or a certain populations and demographics of North Brookfield. And you see North Brookfield kind of falls more or less right in the middle, right? You have some outliers, you have a town like Hollywood that spends over twenty six thousand dollars per student. Then you have some districts that spend fifteen thousand per student. North Brookfield is a little bit over seventeen thousand per student, with the state average being around nineteen five. So, you know, we're, we're not nearly, we're not at the state average right now, but obviously there are districts that are spending less than we are to support student education. And then the last two graphics that I just wanted to show some people, are visual reminders like myself. It's just a breakdown of the parts of the budget. And as I mentioned, the biggest part of this budget was last year, will be again for next for FY twenty five, is our salaries. Just over sixty, sixty five percent of our total FY twenty five budget is salaries. Then you have transportation, building grounds, tuitions, and it goes down from there. And you look at things like athletics, you look at the, the elementary school, high school, those are very small parts of the budget. Because outside of salaries, the supplies and the additions that were asked for, and the increase for supplies is very minimal. So, you know, you look at those, those things that support our learning on a day to day basis. Look at our extra curriculums, our pro curriculums like athletics. They're a very small part of our overall budget. So I just thought that was a poor visual to look at when thinking about this.
Sorry, two questions, tuition, that's the special ed tuition?
Correct.
Okay. And then buildings, and the second, buildings, grounds, and assuming, that number includes heat, electricity, all buildings.
Correct.
Right, so I just want people to have that in context. It's not, we're not buying seven point six percent of our budget in supplies.
No, no, that's.
Without having to include those buildings in the, in the, just, you know, the four corners of the earth, that is heating, electricity, all of the things that we need to do to keep both.
Every kid who are.
That's when you need that one on one education, there you go. No, seriously, so I just want to make sure that people understand that. When they see that on the graph, that it's, it's including all of the things that keep the environment manageable, right? Heat, electricity, all that stuff, thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome. And so just closing thoughts, and I know that, again, I know you've only had this for a couple of days, and you may need more time to digest and to think of more questions, and that's, I think that's, that's the process that we want to look at. But a few things I just want the committee to think about, and, and the general public to know about, is that just because a need goes unfunded, doesn't mean that, that meeting has run away, okay? I think if I ask both principals right now, they could come up with additional staff, and they'd love to have. So just because we're not funding it right now, just because we didn't ask for it, knowing the financial climate of the community, doesn't mean we don't need it. So I just want to be very clear about that. First and foremost, we want to preserve our staff upholding. We've done a lot of work the last year and a half to look at what we're offering our students in the way of curriculum and supports. And we want to continue that work, and we want to make sure that, you know, we are committed to giving our students the best, best math curriculum that we possibly can. We're looking at our reading curriculum for FY twenty five. We just added, particularly the way, put things more of that in as we go through FY twenty five. Building that innovative pathway. We've done a lot of work with our communication, our new webpage for our families and our students and our staff. So we have a lot of great things going on, and we really want to maintain that momentum that we started these last couple of years. And this budget, I think, is a very fair budget. It does not have, again, all the things that we love to have. We're being very mindful of where we're at and kind of the financial constraints we're looking at right now. So this, again, this is the, the first draft of this budget, hopefully the school committees will look at, and I welcome your feedback.
Anybody have any feedback from the phone regarding the budget at this moment? Other than Moby gave him, but he was trying to give his presentation.
I'm just looking through the salaries, I was wondering, I know there's a couple of teachers that serve dual roles across the two schools. I was wondering if their salaries duplicated on both, both schools are starting with the same, the same salary? Or if their salaries split to the two schools?
If they're working, well, then it's split to the two of us, you're shooting.
So the amount is showing up under one, under the old elementary school, that's X amount plus by school now?
So it's twenty thousand in each, it's forty thousand, it's not?
Yeah, yes.
Questions, comments? I'm going to share this one for you. Who's up?
Thank you.
I have to go.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it, thank you, that's good.
So at the elementary school, we are about to, well, I imagine at the high school as well, but our middle of the year winter interval assessment, our common assessment, math growth, will be from January twenty ninth to February sixteenth, fifteenth, July, Fridays, I think, November sixteenth, which is for all students K six. And it assesses students in E L A and math. And it will be the, it's an exciting interval, because it will show us the progress and growth that the students have made since their fall assessment. So we're looking forward to that data. Our leadership committees are continuing their work. Math is working on lesson studies where they are observing each other's practice. And the leadership committee is working on discussing a new E L A program that we would like to move towards. Again, that focus is making sure that our practice is aligned with the science of reading, which is, you know, a body of research that informs best practices in teaching students how to read. Oh, and I had some other things on there too. We already mentioned Natasha Tameja is a new pre K teacher. Shout out to Stacy Mackelitz, who organized the holiday gift opportunity. I was able to get the numbers from her, forty four children in twenty one families. So that's just awesome, such a great, great thing that she does. And all of our school community for their generosity, thank you to them. And then Ms. Redson is prepping our kindergarten registration letters to go home to families, and we're excited to welcome our new kindergarteners in the fall. That is the work to do. Any questions? Thanks.
John, you're up.
All right. So tomorrow night, Tuesday night at six P M., we have our parent information night slash open house for all North Brookfield families. We're excited to meet with our families to show them our school and talk about the amazing things that we're doing in the high school. After a quick introduction, families will meet with staff and students to learn about our curriculum, clubs, sports, and after school events. So we're hoping to see a lot of families there tomorrow. I should add that we will also have pizza, refreshments, and snacks for free, so come and have a good time and have lots of food, so we hope to see you there. We finalized our portion of our graduate work, and our teacher, Mr. Martinez, is designing posters in regards to that work, which we're going to display throughout the school and in every classroom. This is going to be very important for us as we move forward, because it will show the expectations for all students as we prepare them for life, either college or career, after high school. Our portion of our graduate will guide our curriculum and N C L Ds for all students. This focuses on five key areas of student success, resilient and flexible learners, innovative and critical thinkers, communicators and collaborators, character, and global citizens. On Friday, January nineteenth, we sent six students to the M I A A Diversity Equity and Inclusion Summit at Holy Cross College in Worcester. The summit featured lessons on cultural competency, L G B T Q, leadership first, gender equity, and students with disabilities. I can tell you that I saw the students when they came back Friday at the end of the day, and they were very excited about what they learned and saw. They were excited to see Holy Cross, and they're looking forward to, we had a school council meeting right before I came here, and one of our students was talking about some of the things that they learned that they want to start doing in our school. So really great opportunity for our kids, as we look to constantly put them in more leadership roles throughout the year. Congratulations to last week's senior of the week, Olivia Jean Grande. Olivia will be attending college in the fall, where she plans on majoring in forensic science. Her words of wisdom to students, say yes to every possible opportunity that you are offered. This place can make you a better person and help you realize your full potential. But if you don't push yourself in and out of school, to your limits, you're not going to go anywhere. Get involved, be kind to everyone, and get out of your comfort zone. I had to share that tonight, because I thought that was awesome, and I plan on putting that in my office, because that is tremendous, Olivia, so thank you. I didn't have it in here, but as Mr. McCormick mentioned, we're really excited about the work-based learning and pathways program that we've really been working on since the summer. There are more information to follow, but I just wanted to add real quick, tomorrow, Ms. Palisir and myself are going to meet with the junior class to present some of the information to our students, and then Friday, we'll do the same thing to the seniors. Just to answer your question real quick, how are students going to be chosen? And I'll give you more information when we get to it, but there will be an application process for that as well. And I'll share that with you soon as we put it together, but I wanted to make sure I told you about that. That's it.
Thank you.
I forgot to mention it in my report, but I did want to mention. I did want to mention while we're talking about high school stuff, next week, Tuesday, the thirtieth, we're doing another Italian night fundraiser. We're partnering with Mrs. Hanson for that. So it'll benefit student council and the D C trip for next year. But that'll be next Tuesday, the thirtieth, at the tavern in West Brookfield.
Yeah, some of the raffles, and there are tickets still available, and so I don't know how to find her, she's on Facebook, but we went last year, it was a great time, nice to sit with people from the, you may or may not know, get to know them or whatever, but it, it really was a great time. So if you have a chance and you're available, I highly recommend that you do it. It is a great opportunity, as a matter of fact, I have to figure out if we bought our tickets yet, so thank you for the reminder. I saw it the other day, and I'm like, oh, yeah, they are taking, so. Mr. McCormick, do you want to do the student services and, and the facilities report, or do you want me to read them?
It's up to you.
I feel free, my friend.
Okay. All right, I'll start with the student services reports. So as we mentioned already a couple of times, Kim Grant just took over, and Miss Morgan. Child find announcements have been distributed to public buildings, and it was also in, it was also describing special services prior to the district, have also been mailed to families who homeschool their children. And the annual E L L testing will begin very soon, because we have a new E L L teacher on board, and that will end late February. And then we did hold our first virtual C P A C meeting. It was on one seventeen, and we did have one parent attendance. So we're scheduling another meeting in the near future. There'll be in person that will have a, a remote or zoom option, so we'll have both.
So I had a couple of questions that popped into my head when I was sleeping between two o'clock and five o'clock this morning, which is the best time to do any kind of thinking. What do we do about our, our, our students who have physical disabilities, who can't get out of the secondary entrances that we have? So we have a fire alarm, a fire testing, whatever, fire exit testing, and we have all kinds of security testing going on. And the, the elementary school, if you are not in the main door, or you, if you were in a wheelchair or something like that, you can't get out that back door, because there's no ramps on any of those doors. And so what do we do about those kids? I'm just curious, what, I mean, obviously, we've been doing something for them for the last twenty years, I just don't know, what do we do? What do we do for them?
So we're actually in the process of receiving quotes on new ramps. And what we have to do, what we've been doing, is we reach out to security, John Fisher, who is the building inspector. Those ramps have to be designed by, designed by engineers.
Yeah.
So we're getting those, those planes, if you will, for those, for these new ramps. I don't have to speak, because we, we know that's, that's an issue.
So just out of curiosity, are we looking to do it at every exit door for the students? Or are we looking like every other classroom?
Not to start, but some of the main, main ingresses where, you know, there's a concentration of students. So there's a need for, I think it was two or three preschools that we're looking at additionally to start, so we have the overall ramp for all of our students.
Would one of them be near the preschool classes, because that one has steps?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, because I was just thinking, like, the, the, and I, well, it's been a while, other than the tour of the building that we've done. I know down by where the kindergarten classes used to be, that is a flat entrance, and you can get in and out, but you have to be in the hallway to do that, right? So if you're in a lockdown or something, not able to be in the hallway, those back doors, they all have a lip of six to ten or twelve inches or whatever it is, and I was curious what we did for that. So what, in this, in this, at this moment, before we do the ramps, and I thank you for looking into that, before we do that, what do we do for those students that are in those classrooms that have physical disabilities, that can't get out those doors? What do we do? Do we take them out through the main hallways? Is that what we currently do?
There are actually several other buildings, they're, they're, like you said, a model to be around.
So we make, we give them out that way?
Yes. All right. And we have, we have some, some older wooden ramps, but those aren't, aren't good enough anymore, so.
Yeah.
We're updating, upgrading our ramp system.
It's heavier too, though. You know, there's off the shelf, like, like a little, some options, you, like, especially if you've got kind of a set height, that can be, it's just a matter of one step down, or like half a step. Those are easily filled with off the shelf items.
And you could even do something light, leans up against the wall, that's a deployable one. Like you hear ramps between trucks and stuff.
Yeah, so putting things up in the back of the truck, yeah, yeah, some sort of, but again, you need the engineer.
Right.
What do we do about them participating with their fellow students at, like, in the, in the recess area, right? So we have a recess area that's down a hill, and do we have anything that gets them down there? What do we do with that? Or do we?
We, we talked about that just for the last week, of making sure.
Great minds.
There's obviously a path that's to shovel out, there's a space to shovel out on the playground that anybody can access, including a student in a wheelchair. We are looking into buying, they're almost like skis for the wheelchair, to help it, like, goes up and down a hill in muddy or icy conditions. So again, I think it's something that is very much on our mind, because we want to make sure everybody's accessible access to everything.
Okay.
I believe this is preschool, I spoke, was it last year? You, you, you and I talked for a while about making the playground accessible, and just how big of a task that would be. Something that's on like the, the dream wish list for the school to get, because if they can get down the hill, they can't get to the playground.
Right, because the mulch isn't really conducive to the chairs. So that's, that's a long-term goal that Mr. McCormick and I have been, you know, kind of working on, is what a new playground could look like, and what that would cost, and, you know, it's, it's a dream, but we'll get there. In the meantime, though, we are able to make the playground structures accessible for our students in wheelchairs with some, we have some mats that are brought down there for the mulch, and like Mr. McCormick said, making sure that there's a path that the chairs can get up and down, because it's kind of a steep hill on one side. But if they go out the side, it's less steep, and the chairs are able to go that way.
I'd love to see opportunities for that.
Nice. Okay, I think Dad's on it.
Oh, he is, for sure.
All right, anything else on student services, school committee report?
Yes, I want to go back to that topic that we were talking about, the preschool last time, right?
Yep.
Okay. So one little question I had was, on the website, it has a section for preschool, and sometimes it's referred to as pre K, sometimes it's referred to as preschool. What is it?
The term?
Yeah.
As far as I know, they're interchangeable, but if I miss.
There they are.
If I miss.
But it seems like.
That's how they're intended to be, if there's a definition that.
I think pre K is probably a more educational jargon in preschools.
Yeah, okay. Secondly, the preschool has no page on your web, on your webpage, so I don't know if the, you know, the teachers need to get to that or that. you know, the teachers need to get to that over there. Sure. So I, I think this question's probably not for you, but maybe, I don't know if anybody knows this, but what are the ratios in the classrooms? Do you know?
What are they?
Yeah.
Like special ed typical year? I don't have that data off the top of my head. I'd have to, it would take me some time to, like, dig for it.
And, well, how many students are in the sub-separate class? The bridge, is it called Bridges? Is that what it's called?
Bridges, yes.
The students that access the Bridges program right now, there are three.
When we had the meeting last time, it's, Mrs. Knapp was saying something about nine.
That's how many can be in it.
There are space, nine spaces.
I believe that's what she said.
It's not nine students.
No.
No.
I was, I misunderstood, okay.
So I have a. Just ask a question, follow up to yours, and I know that we don't necessarily know the answer here, but I recall, if I'm not mistaken, that there was a ratio of 50% plus one to special ed, regulated to special ed. Do we have any sense if we're meeting that ratio without doing the deep dive that you're looking for? Because I'm just curious, are we meeting that ratio?
I believe we are. I'm gonna have to check to be sure, though.
We're, we're well above that in high school.
Yeah, no, we're talking specifically about preschool. That's, that's the concern, because the program has changed other than what we had approved, and I'm just trying to understand.
To my understanding, the move, the shift was to help this ratio, so.
Not debating that at all. I'm just, I'd like to understand what that ratio is, so.
Yeah, we can, Mrs. Knapp could probably provide us with that.
Can we get that from that?
Yes.
Thank you.
So my question to Ms. Knapp last time was, when she mentioned the sub-separate class, she said that they did not, that class, and we talked a little bit about this via email, that that class did not need a preschool teacher. That discreet trials are run as an ABA program throughout the state, and they don't have a preschool teacher.
By the B C B A.
Right, it's run by the B C B A without a preschool teacher. So in my research and speaking with Desi, the question regarding running trials with the B C B A for two hours in the morning begets the following question. So where I get the two hours was a, you had, was applied to my email saying that the children were in class from 8:15 to 10, I think it was. Pull it up. Name of the email was, wait a minute. Should apply. Oh, here it is, okay. So, yep, 8:15 to 10, that's what you said. So the, the following question would be important to know, and it's not something that I can know because I don't look at those children's I E Ps, but if anybody is watching this who had the child in that class, this is something you need to consider. So the I E Ps for those students have to have on their service delivery grid the times, they can't say they're in preschool from 8:15 to, I think it was 1:30 you said the kids were in school till? The kids were in class?
I don't need no form, I don't have to call.
But Bridges, do you know what, Mrs. Priestley, do you know what?
Yeah, they say 8:15 to 1:30, those children are in school.
They are in our building, yes.
Yeah. So then, the service delivery grid cannot say they're in preschool from 8:15 to 1:30, however many minutes that is. It would have to say that they're in discreet trials in the morning with the preschool teacher in the afternoon. And so there's only so much I can do without seeing someone's I E P, which is not my business, but it's, if it said that they were supposed to be in preschool from 8:30 to, 8:15 to 1:30, and they were with a B C B A, then that's not following the I E P. So that's where I got stuck in terms of trying to find out if you needed a preschool teacher to run a classroom or not. And my other question was, you said that they went to school Monday through Friday in that email. Is that, do those, those children in that Bridges program go to school Monday through Friday, not Tuesday through Friday like the other children do?
No, and to answer your question, the I E Ps are written correctly.
Okay.
I just slipped in one. And, you're welcome. And the students are in that program with those hours Tuesday through Friday. Their services.
I, yeah. I must have spoken.
Right, I wasn't, I thought maybe it was an error, I wasn't, you know, I just wanted to double-check.
Yeah, it services only, just like all the other preschool services that students just get.
Try to tell your points. Maybe I.
That's okay. I'm all right, yeah, it is worth it.
Because the I E Ps are.
And that's also reflected in that, the 4x60.
Okay.
Legal implications there.
Right. Okay, so that's why I just wanted to follow up and present that information in case anyone's following at home, that I did talk to Desi and try to find out running a class like that, is this, is appropriate, and okay, and, because I want to be sure, I don't want a district doing something that would look bad, so it looks like it's good. All right, I just wanted to present that.
Any other questions? I think you have the facilities report.
I do, so I just, two things, facilities report from Ray, and also just, there was a request, I believe it was back in November, inventory of the elementary school basement, which is the second page of this. Just a quick update here, so we have been ongoing some repairs in both buildings, guaranteed glass, fixing rear front doors of the high school, we have fixed the bathroom walls in elementary school, we have received now two quotes for our sidewalks. This was an area that was pointed out, so we, we can all see it, you can outside see the cracks in the sidewalks that we need to fix, so we now have two quotes, we're waiting on a third. Our I VAC grants, which we received last year, $100,000, again, just real quick, that is to update the software that controls the temperature of the two buildings to make it more even and consistent, if you like that. That work, that changeover should start happening later this month, thankfully. The brake line and the dump truck was repaired, the dump truck is what we use to plow our parking lot, so that was a good thing, because I got fixed. They noticed they went during one of the last class sessions. And then we also, as I mentioned earlier, we're on a second shift for Stoddian, Sub Stoddian at the high school level.
So, no, no. The quotes for the sidewalks, are those like placement or repairs?
Repairs. So if you look from elementary school all the way down by the middle school to the high school entrance, there's several sections that are cracked and are falling apart, so repairs, not going to be the whole.
All right, so you got to drill in and like?
Yes, when we rebarred it and then filled it.
Best to wait till after stult season for that.
Yeah.
So before you go through the inventory that's on the elementary school, I appreciate the fact that we have this. I was actually looking for the complete inventory of what's in the elementary school basement, including what emergency management may have there, including what LPAC may have there, and all I see is what we can have there, including 10 broken chairs, which I'd love to get into the conversation why we're holding on to 10 broken chairs.
Daylights?
Maybe.
Broken daylights?
Yeah, you know, whatever they are, right? So I'm joking with you, because I know some just gets down there, and don't come to my house and look what I got in my basement, because I probably have 10 broken chairs down there too. But I'm more concerned about, again, if something were to happen to that building, what did we just lose in that building? What, what is in that building besides, I mean, I think we have a decent, I'm hoping we have a decent inventory of what's above ground, right? But what's in that building, I know we've used it for a lot of things over the years, what's in there that we may lose if something were to happen to that building? Whether it's us, or LPAC, or, or emergency manager, it's our building, we're responsible for that, so I'd just like to have an understanding of that, so.
I can't speak to LPAC, but the emergency management section, there was supposed to be an inventory done at one of the meetings, but I think between illness and weather and lack of a quorum, it has not been done, but there was an inventory done last year, I believe.
So, yeah, let's see that. Yeah, I'm just saying.
I can reach out to both groups.
You could at least get a general, a general sum for that, but, yeah, there's, it's a lot of, they got a ton of stuff for COVID, like, there's cases of face masks.
I would imagine.
There's cots.
Yep.
There's a lot of, like, PPE stuff. There's, there's contingency things for what, like what building emergency management is responsible for, supporting, if anyone doesn't know, they help support the fire department if there's a fire, and there's a certain, there's a certain number of alarms, I think it's two alarms, they show up, they'll have requests, and the fire chief, and they provide support for firefighters and any of the families that might be involved, that there's an house fire, they help provide support for people at the scene. And we're also trained in first aid, so there's additional help there. And if there's ever a large amount in town, where we need to have a shelter set up at the high school, then EMA would help run that shelter, so there's training there as well, and interhors, setting up beds and all that kind of stuff, so that's why there is an effort recently to get the generator back up and repaired and so forth, so, anyway, that's, general was there.
And we've done that before, we've opened the walls and stuff before. So it's a critically important area of our town, and I just want to make sure that we have an understanding of what's in that facility, and that if something tragic were to happen, we need to understand what we've lost, because we need to make sure that we've got that covered, that's all. So if you could do that, maybe we can have that to next.
I'll work with all schools groups.
Yeah, that would be great. And, and thank Ray for his work on this, you know, I don't know, how do we get a hold of the LPAC? I don't, I don't know, I mean, do, do we know anybody there?
I have no idea.
Yeah, I don't know.
What does LPAC stand for?
Maybe the Local Public Access Cable, I think?
Oh.
Yeah, am I correct, LPAC? Yeah, I think that's it.
So is this the guy we asked?
Yeah, that's probably giving them a hard time, so, in any event, yeah, so let's, let's figure that out, make sure that we have it recovered, so, okay, cool, awesome. Any other questions for, and again, thank Ray for us for putting that together, I appreciate it. All right, any, and any others? I didn't mean to exclude anybody else, but we don't see Ray's report very often, so I appreciate him taking the time to do that. And we did have a technology report, right? So Justin had a report, do you want to?
Sure. So all iPads purchased 2020, 2023 have been updated with iPad OS 17.2. Most of our pro books throughout the district have been updated version 1.20. As you know, we did launch our new webpage app less than a month ago now, so you can download that app for free on Google or Apple in the app stores. And I think, I have a iPhone, it's very easy to navigate, and it's helpful for families. Digital report cards are going out on Friday the 26th for the second term. All school pictures have been uploaded to the new website for staff that we have, and school brands for students, including the retakes, which happens through the holidays. Our switch over from school rays to Alma, our student information system is about 30% complete. That is the new S I S we're unveiling for next year. And then Mr. Hackinson does a fantastic job with his budget, and you saw Carter's budget in presentation, or the city of mine, or your seat on Friday, and that's it.
So I just have a question to the app, does that allow for notification of our parents for things like school being closed and things like that, or?
What it does is, when I send out a one-call or a newsletter, it gets bounced in the app, goes to, I put it on Facebook, it goes to the app, so kind of, the new S I S, we leave it back, they'll all be connected, so we'll phase out one-call, we use the new S I S as a message.
Yeah, I'm just curious, I mean, you already have that on your phone, that catching difficulties, this will actually, you know, type something.
Was that, was that absolutely in the Justin vote, or was that like kind of a third-party thing?
It was, I think they have a kind of fourth grade app, they gave us the specs and they built it, so Apple gave us a version, they allocated it.
So was there a cost?
It's built in the contract we have.
All right, any other questions on the reports? And on your own business?
I just want to say, I'm excited to hear more about the effort at the high school for the, the technology program and working with the local citizens and fiber and so forth, that sounds, I'm excited to hear that.
We're very excited about it, so we'll be happy to show you more, very happy to be sure.
Under our own business, we have the additional superintendent goal.
So this will be goal number six. My task is to ensure that no public school districts strictly appears to offer regulations in the wage act, and we're reminding the district by the rules of two designated determinations. And I outlined six actions, which I think we've already started to do, and we'll continue to do throughout this year and move forward, to make sure that we are more protected against any of these issues happening in the near or distant future. So I think a lot of this revolves around making sure that Cindy and I and Angie and our office are aligned with town hall, and making sure that people are made out in a timely fashion, in accordance with M G Ls, and making sure that we're here to that. And that just, you know, making sure that if, in the case of a termination, that we are, we are providing those people life checks, and they have a clear explanation of how they're reached to pay out in the time period. So I think that's, that's the focus of this, but we, you know, we will continue to work with the union council as well to make sure that we are doing it in a timely fashion to alleviate that this happens.
Okay, so before we go any further, I want to say that I know Dan's not active today, but he did ask me if he were, it's okay if we talked about this and voted on it before, because I know we've been holding on Wall Street because the full committee wasn't together, didn't ask him how we would vote on it, because that would be inappropriate, but he did ask me if it was okay if we moved forward, and he said we were okay to vote in his absence, so, does anyone have any questions or comments or thoughts on the goal?
What is the timeline for things like policy review and updates, staff training, and weirdness?
I think that, like I said, we're starting, we can have those conversations this year, I think that you can have things, I'm sure I've had it this school year. It's not just our office, it's also us working collaboration with downtown, so making sure that our two offices are on the same page, and I think that we're in a place.
So my end of school year?
Yes.
Any other questions?
I think we need motion to approve this, is considerable for the, so then is that a motion? Will we approve this sixth goal?
Second. This is really a discussion, I'm sorry. I know wrong is wrong, it's better than that, I apologize. All right, so any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? All right, going back up to the top of the page, policies, and we have nothing on the policy, and we have nothing on the new business. Move to adjourn? I don't believe we have anything under executive sessions, and the only thing that we need to do is come up with a schedule and working with the folks from the teachers association to schedule all of that, but I don't think they have anything under executive session, so your motion, sir? Move to adjourn. Can I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? All right, see you next month.